Taylor, will you let us know when you're ready?
You can tell me if you're ready.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, she's done.
Okay. A minute to spare.
No, dear?
Okay.
We were in the front yard and the little dog was barking up pretty much. Daddy was...
I'm sorry, in the garage. Why'd he bark at me?
Little dogs have their fears.
Over there.
Over there. It's over there, Miss.
Yeah.
He was at a harness?
He is on a harness. Yeah, he was like...
He was mad it was under his apple tree.
Well, it was in the front yard and it worked its way to the apple tree. So that was big excitement, but then he was like, ah. It was starting to get too dark.
She's gonna act.
All right.
We're gonna call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. We're gonna do a roll call. Ms. Howe, here. Ms. Butler-Chandler, here. Mr. Elmeriji?
Here.
Mr. Benzie?
Here.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Present.
And Mr. Wissawker is absent. We still have a court, I'm sure we're good. Okay, I do two, your civil reflection, pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move aside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have item three, which is approval of the agenda, although I don't see Mr. Kopke here.
No, he said he was gonna wait until Steve was first.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll have approval of the agenda.
I approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe? Yes. Thank you. All right, item four, it's a disclosure of conflict of interest. Do we have any? Apparently, it seems like we have none. Public statement number five on your agenda. Anybody? No. Come on, Ian. Okay. And apparently, there is no one here from the county, state, federal, or any other agency. So we'll move to consent agenda, but before we do that, I'd like, this is without discussion, so I'm going to ask, we're gonna take the vote on it, but I'm going to ask that we remove B through J. And either put it, I would like to put it with the items for action. If we can, with discussion, we can do that.
Oh, I, yeah, I think we can.
Okay.
B, J, okay.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's good. It'll go items for action, B. So we need C.
So new B, okay.
B, yep. So it's A, V, and C.
Oh, under unfinished?
Items for action with discussion.
Right, unfinished, though?
Number thirteen.
Right. Thirteen or fourteen?
It will be thirteen, B is a boy.
Okay.
And number D, C.
Okay.
Okay. And we still have consent agenda approval for A. So we need a roll call vote.
We need a motion first.
To deal with, about discussion, and the board member can ask to review it.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion.
Why are we moving it? Can I ask that?
No. Yeah, it's fine.
If you want to talk about it.
Well, you can talk about it now.
No, it says without discussion.
No.
Well, when did that come in?
It's always...
That always comes out?
Yeah.
Has it really? All right.
Can we have discussion about the motions to approve it? Certainly. I'm fine with moving it.
What?
If we're seeking a motion, I'll make the motion with the suggested amendments by our supervisor. I'll second it.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yeah.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. All right, we're going to go to number eight, which is approval of the minutes.
We have to approve the rest of the consent agenda that you didn't move.
Yes, you did.
We have to, so I'll make a motion to...
Is it amended? Oh, that's fine, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for...
What are we voting against?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C got moved out.
No, B through J got moved.
I don't think there's anything left.
Wait.
Yes, there is, A.
We just voted on A.
I know.
So I don't think there's anything left.
So my assumption was, my motion was to move consent agenda items out of the consent agenda, and Joe's motion was to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
What's your view?
For a vote.
Okay.
And we said we needed a motion, so... Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
I didn't catch who seconded them, sorry.
Joe and Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler? Yes, and Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ready for number eight, which is approval of the minutes? Can I do it all together? Do you guys want to go separate? No, actually. Is there just, is there any discussion on approval of these minutes because I have? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as...
I'll second it.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
I thought Marie had questions.
No, well, I don't know if you want a discussion, if not, you already moved to...
Yeah, but you have discussion afterwards.
But you're the facilitator, you get to have discussion if you want to.
Sure I can, but after it's been moved, so that's probably...
That's now.
My only question with these, because I was gonna vote no. My only question with these is, Brent does a wonderful job of being sociable and helping with the minutes. However, there's not a signature.
The signature comes after the address.
No. Signature is put on who takes the minutes.
There are drafts on the minutes?
Yes.
So there's no signature. After they're all approved, that's when I sign them and I put them in the book in the back.
We have no signature to know who it is.
She's saying, like, submitted by Brenda Butler-Chandler or submitted by...
With the signature.
A, O.
No, we have to type, and that's the question. This is something that I've been thinking about for a long time, and that's part of the discussion that we'll have with the others. There are no signatures on any of our minutes, our committees. So that's part of the issue that I'm having with it, is the fact. And I have checked with Robert's rules, that checks with. In fact, Robert's rules says you have to have a signature. MSU says you have to have a signature. Our rules are silent on it, and it doesn't say anything with that. And it's also silent, the open meetings act, we'll go through this because I want to read it again, but it does say that you have to have it signed by the person writing the minutes when it comes to... Hang on here. Because I did a little research on it. I've been questioning it for a long time. MSU extension says you have to have a signature. Robert's rules, we revise, state you need a signature, so...
I don't, I don't want to overstep front of them, but, um, so in the past, Cliff McQueen and now Cliff Butler-Chandler, it's required by the auditors and the accountants that they be signed, so once this is approved by this board, they are signed and they are archived in a book that is checked by the auditors and accountants. So they are signed.
But they're not signed when we approve them.
Because they're not final.
No, they need to have a signature. So that all of us know.
But they're not, but they can still be changed if they want.
We can agree to disagree, I'm just putting it out there, so...
Just for clarification, is Robert's rules and MSU clear that there needs to be a signature on the draft minutes that goes before the board for discussion?
That's correct. In fact, it's preferred that it be there for the draft.
Okay, you said that's where the, that's where...
Because that's your official, and we're voting on the official word.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that you were saying it was mandatory on the draft.
I thought she just said preferred.
You said preferred.
Well, if I said preferred, I mean that it's, if you guys want it, it's mandatory that it be the signature for both. And they do a great job with our minutes, but there has been a signature, and it never has been. For a long time.
Okay.
So, again...
It's my misunderstanding. I didn't understand that you meant during...
Please do.
Yep.
No, Brent is always really, really good about, oh, yeah, with checking, and I like that. I like that a lot.
Okay.
But anyway.
So my misunderstanding, I'm sorry.
Yes. So are we okay to do it for tonight and start at the next meeting? Is that sound okay? That's entirely up to this board as to whether or not they want to accept them as is or whether or not it's something that you want to...
Well, we have a motion to accept them, so...
That's what I'm saying. So, Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Move approval of the vouchers.
Now, hold on, guys. On your number nine, on ours, the approval of the vouchers, and yes, we do vote on those.
I know, I just made a motion to vote on them.
And I didn't request that you make the motion yet.
You don't have to request a motion.
Yes, I do.
No, you don't. That's not how Robert's rules works. If you got to request every motion, you get to control the entire agenda. Maybe you should call MSU Extension, see what they think.
We have discussion, whatever you know. We have a motion to approve.
Yes, we do. You have a motion now, number nine, to approve the vouchers.
Correct.
And it's, Ryan made a motion, who's second?
I did.
Joe is second. Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
And the treasurer is absent, but he is in report for, now moving to committee appointment, which is number eleven. And just for information, if this wasn't enough for you, Ms. Boyd did call and asked that if she could continue with her commission as a commissioner, but I'll be commissioning. So I guess we take a vote on, unless there's some other questions.
I move to appoint Terry Wood to the Housing Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2026.
I'll second that.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmeriji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Now, we're on twelve, which is the township committee reports, and apparently, this is Chris Hagerman, who is apparently going to give us a report. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here to, my name is Chris Hagerman, co-chair of the Safe Frost School Committee, started by trustee Jason Elmeriji earlier this summer. I've been asked to come and give you guys an update as to how we're doing. So I'll just start, we're sort of the action and everything sort of gotten, got really moving. So October 1st, Friday, after school, there was a, we had a, sorry, my, I didn't write this the way I wanted to say it. We had a audit, an audit of the township, basically working with MSU team, which is an engineering team and several other groups in that, in that. Michigan Fitness Program, Bath Township Police Department, Clinton County Road Commission, as well as community members, we did a walking audit. MSU created a map of the downtown area that we're trying to bring the Safe Frost School program to. These areas include Main Street, Walnut Street, High Street, Chestnut Street, Clinton Street, Cherry Street, Webster Road, Slate Road, and through Clark. And MSU provided the map, which was broken down into three separate areas. We broke up into three groups in this audit. Each group was designated about forty minutes to walk one way, about twenty minutes one way, twenty minutes back. The purpose of, or I suppose their mission was to come up with areas that needed to be fixed, addressed, built, whatever paths needed to give a safe route to walking or biking route to school. And groups were directed to stay in their areas where there were sidewalks. As we know, there are several areas in the map that I described that just don't have sidewalks, and that's sort of what brought all this together. On Friday, November 12th, the committee had a second walking audit. This time, instead of after school, we decided to do it in the morning to get a different perspective of traffic and, and walking patterns of people who were using the walking routes that are provided at this time. During the, let's see, the results of the two audits were very similar. However, the biggest difference, obviously, one was in the afternoon and one was in the morning. The audit provided, the first audit provided daylight, warm, dry weather, and after-school traffic, whereas the, the second one, it was dark, cold, and wet. So that was another reason why we wanted to do it, to not only get the timeframes, but, but since the seasons had sort of changed and the weather was going to be different, we knew that we were gonna have a completely different set of circumstances. So outcome for the first one, problems that were, problems that were identified, lack of sidewalks to high-population areas such as Hunter's Crossing or Mead Creek. Not only are they not there, but lighting's not there as well. Areas where there were sidewalks, they were broken, cracked, undersized. A lot of times, they had grass, weeds, or trees growing into them, sometimes even cars parked across, across the sidewalks. Also, lack of signage for speed, school zones, crosswalks, and, and lighting, as I said a second ago. Second was very similar. The good thing about this is it showed, again, weather, so we'd had some rain since then, so there was standing water in a lot of the areas where, where the, where, you know, low areas or broken areas, so that was really good to see. Another thing was entrances into the road from the sidewalk, so ADA-compliant sidewalk ramps, roads connecting, connecting through, or, sorry about that, crosswalks, dirt and debris, vegetation, very similar, but one of the really good things that I took from the morning is that, you know, we addressed the, the lighting at, on the first one, but it's daylight and you can't, you can see that there's not a lot of lights. But now it's seven o'clock in the morning, and you can actually see that the lights either are not functioning, or there's just not enough of them to make a, make an, to do well, you know, actually do something. So walking audits were performed, a way to, doing the walking audits is a way to get the community involved, but it's also a necessary thing for, to get the Safe Frost School grant. Between the two surveys, other audits, sorry, audits and other information gathered by various teams of people, the SRT, the Safe Frost School grant brings in $220,000 for schools, per school in the area. So since we have two schools, elementary and middle school, that's gonna bring $440,000 of infrastructure for sidewalks, lighting, and whatever, whatever else we can design into it, make it, make it a good area to be. And then also, there's an additional $20,000 that they use for education, and that'll be either inside the schools, educating police officers, cross, crossing guards, all sorts of stuff. Another resource that we had at our meetings was Clinton County Road Commission, Mark Trotter. So he's been very active with us, he's also active with the Webster Road Committee. He really would like this all to sort of work together, and he's brought it to our attention that if we can get the grant submitted by February 23rd of '22 coming up here, we can, we can get the money, not necessarily, I'll back up a little bit. So he wants to have it submitted by the 23rd of February. So if we can do that and get the grant money, the grant money would be secured and they would front the money up to us. So the grant money for '22 and '23 is already taken, but what we'd be applying for is the grant money for '24. If we can get the loans, or not the loan, it's not a loan, it's a grant, if we can get the grant secured through Safe Frost School, then what they'll do is they'll sort of, they'll front the money, knowing that it's guaranteed money, and then we can go ahead and get all this stuff taken care of, all at the same time. One key note in that, though, is that Safe Frost School money is solely for the sidewalks and the infrastructure and stuff. The thing that Mark brought up to us at our last meeting was he needs, the township needs to come up with some money to help engineer, pay for some of the engineering costs. He didn't give me a number yet, he said, but that's, that's something we're gonna have to consider. So that's gonna be on you guys if, if we make this happen. The board and/or the school is gonna have to come up with a way to start approving some sort of funds, and I will get more information on that, so you guys have an idea of how much to expect, because I don't know at this point, he just, he just told me about it. Money is awarded to Michigan Department of Transportation, then they forward it down to Clinton County Road Commission, and through this whole process, we're working with MSU, who's making sure we have all the right steps, all the right information to do the grant. Once the grant is submitted, Michigan Fitness, sorry, Michigan Fitness Program sort of works with us to make sure the grant is written properly and in the right way. So upcoming dates, important dates, the school surveys, they've also, we've also been working with the schools, obviously. Paul Hart-Sig has been an integral part of our committee. Part of the Safe Frost School program is you have to do a survey with the schools. The surveys, they did three types of surveys, electronic surveys for the parents, electronic surveys from third to 12th, 12th grade, and then in middle school, or I think it's the, I can't remember who it goes, I think it's middle, I think it's both schools, but it's called a wa, it's called a walking tally. So what, what the teacher does is they ask the students at the beginning and end of the day, how did they get to school, how are they gonna leave school for the day? So, and that's just something they, it's a checkoff, and then they turn it back in after a three-day process. So important dates coming up, we're planning to get the surveys completed by Thanksgiving. We got our second walking audit, all that information we turned over to MSU. Safe Frost School public reveal at the library, Bath Township Library, excuse me, library will be on December 15th. Everybody's welcome, that's when they're, they're gonna reveal everything that, that we've come up with and the plan that they're gonna submit. So at that meeting, that's important, too, because it's at that time where we can make changes, tell them, yeah, we like this, no, we don't like that. If there's any changes, we can do it at that point. And so after that, if we want to make changes, they'll go ahead and change them, and then we'll set up a third meeting at the, sometime in January. We haven't set that up because we don't know if there's gonna be changes yet, but that'll be an option. And then application due, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna turn it in for the '24 grant process, we're gonna have to have it submitted to, on, we're gonna have to have it submitted on, as I said, February 23rd of '22. And then April 6th, we will have, if there's any revisions needed after it's submitted, April 6th, the revisions will have to be made and turned in at that point. Then, as, and then on July 20th is when we'll know if we've been accepted to get this money. That's about all I got. Do you guys have any questions for me? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ryan.
So I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying. For the '24 grant, we need to have it in by February 23rd of 2022?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
And the reason why we want to, it's because '22 and '23 money is already taken.
So they're just running it early.
We're running it early, and we want to be able to make sure that we're in that, and then Clinton County Road Commission, even though that's further out than what they're doing, the Webster Road Committee, they want to know that that money's good to go, so then they can basically pay for it and then take the money out, it's guaranteed money.
Got it, that, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
I have one other question.
Sure.
What is the radius from the schools at which the money can be invested?
It's about a mile to a mile and a half.
Okay.
So that was one thing that we really had a lot of discussion about, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that reminded me of something. Once we get to Slate Road and down to Hunter's Crossing, that's really pretty far, that, that's like the peak, or the, as far as they want to go. My goal and our committee's goal is to get it to Watson Road. That's where we'd really like to be. I think, as well as the committee, that that is a good way, a good distance to really get where rural sort of meets the city, I guess, or whatever you want to call it. I feel like that's the good break-in point. So that's, that's our, our goal. And then secondly, I found out at our last meeting that, you know, we talk a lot about bikers or bicyclists and getting them out, and the whole purpose of, of this committee and this whole grant is to get people out walking and, and riding their bike to school. So one thing Mark told me was, we need, if we want to have a wider shoulder, because based on what we have, we have sort of talked about not being able to really put a bike lane in a lot of these because houses are so close to the road already, so we talked about having a widened shoulder. But if that's something we want to do, that's something the township would have to pick up. Unless it's, like, a safety issue or something like that, they're not just gonna widen it. So that's, that's something to consider, one, and then something that the township will have to pay for if, if we decide to do that. But that doesn't necessarily have to be part of the Safe Frost School grant program. Okay, just a thinking topic. And also, after getting the second audit set up, I spoke to the middle school principal, Ms. Jonas, and I asked her a little bit about it, and I asked her what she thought about walking the school, bicycling the school, stuff like that, and she said, "A lot of parents pick up their children after school." Sorry, I misspoke. "A lot of parents drop their kids off at school in the morning, mostly because the lighting, sidewalk issues, all that stuff. They have a lot less driving traffic after school because they feel safer letting their kids walk home to perspective, wherever." kids walk home to Perspective, wherever it is they're going. So that's something to consider, and, and I thought that was really great that she shared that with me, so, um, another reason why this is important, lighting, sidewalks, all these things. Yes, ma'am?
My question, thank you. Really appreciate you being here to help work through this. If you don't get the grant, if for some reason the grant is turned down, lack of a better term, then that $440,000 that is being asked for the township to put up front, then we're with that, correct? I mean, you already have the cash, the project's already started, but if the grant isn't accepted, then the township's already...
There's no money involved in this yet at all. The committee is unpaid. Um, is that where you're going, the committee?
No, if, if, if for the $440,000, because I, if I understood, maybe I, maybe I didn't, you're asking that the $440,000 be put up front, then because it's 2024 that you're going to be asking?
Nope. Okay, I see where you're going. I understand what you're saying. No, so, uh, we're working, so this grant is, uh, through Departments of Transportation, road commissions and stuff like that. So what I, what I'm saying with that is, if we can secure the grant, if we get approved to have the grant, Clinton County Road Commission, because of the Webster Road Project, they want to ma, they want to mesh all this together at the same time. They want to do all the engineering at the same time, so they can do all the sidewalks at the same time, because they're the ones that are going to be responsible for all the engineering and the final say in how everything goes. If we can get the grant secured for 2024, then they will pay upfront the money in '23 when we're doing the Webster Road Project sidewalk. So, um, there's, the township doesn't have to pay any money for that at all.
Okay, yes.
There's, there's zero money invested at all. The only thing is, and again, I will get more information on this, is they're going to need money for engineering and doing that, but they're not even going to ask for that until we know for sure that we got the grant, because if it's, if we don't get approved for it, they're not going to start putting all this money in design and all these other things. What we're going to have from MSU, we're going to have a, a really nice laid-out plan that we can do whenever we want, and we can do whatever we want within that plan.
Okay.
We don't have to specifically do everything they want, like the Webster Road Committee. We're, we're making a master plan. What, what is the best-case scenario? Do we have to do it all in '23? No. But what we do want to do is have a secured plan together, so we know exactly what we want.
So the acceptance of the grant, then, we don't start, you don't start, whoever doesn't start, the sidewalk project, until that money is known for sure that it's going to be there?
That's, it's not going to start till '23.
That's, okay.
We're just trying to get plans together. Uh, Clinton County Road Commission, again, um, they're just going to front the money and have it, have it all ready to go in '23 when the Webster Road Committee is, or Webster Road Project is, is going at the same time. So they have all the equipment here, and it just makes everything, uh, just a lot easier.
So the sidewalks don't start until after the grant's approved, and then we know that that's what we're going to do?
'23 is our mark.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
So, can I just add to that?
Yeah.
It's, no, no, it's, uh, so the Safe Routes to School is a competitive grant, but the way that they structure it and the way, uh, how closely the Michigan Fitness Foundation and MSU works with, uh, the applicant, applicants, is that by March, uh, after the initial review by Michigan Fitness Foundation, uh, there's a near certainty of being funded. And, and so it's, um, what happens after the initial review by Michigan Fitness Foundation is then goes to Michigan Department of Transportation, and then MDOT will work with Clinton County Road Commission on ensuring things like we have ADA compliance, crosswalks, and, and the like. And so those are minor negotiation pieces. So what, uh, Clinton County Road Commission has a tool in its toolbox called an advanced construct. And so they'll leverage their own budgets, uh, to, to construct, do a construction project using future funds. And so they make the investment. The other thing with this grant is that Clinton County Road Commission is the fiduciary, um, or the grant, the money recipient for the infrastructure part of the grant. So, now, we, we do have costs to the township in preparation, so we've committed $4,500 to MSU to support our application. We may have some engineering costs, uh, as, to build up to a final application. These generally will not be the full set of engineering costs. We don't know what the cost will be because we don't know what MSU's going to...
Exactly.
...provide in terms of a set of recommendations and what the committee then will vote on to approve for what they submit as part of the application.
But all of that said, there's an assumption that it's going to be approved. I mean, if you're putting everything in, in, in the pipeline to make sure that it's approved, but there's always that part there that it may not be approved.
And if it's not, I think we could just keep applying for it until we do get it, and then, but the whole goal is with Michigan Fitness, they make sure that this is the right thing, that it happens, that they, we get a chance to submit it, and then we get a chance to resubmit it to make sure it's right.
Yep.
So the likelihood, by the way it sounds, and, and obviously nobody can guarantee anything, uh, but the way it sounds is, you know, it, it's looking really good.
So, yeah, and there's three ways in which this could not get funded. One is we don't submit an application or the required materials on time or at all. So we fail on our part, which we're not going to do.
Right.
Two, we get, uh, we run into some sort of political nightmare where community members come together and sue to block the progress of what we want to do. Three, there's some sort of cataclysmic event at the federal government where they, they pulled the funding for 2024.
Or four, if the grant isn't written, but that's why the fitness people are there in order to make sure that things are...
MSU is going to take us all the way to the five-yard line, and all we have to do is take it across...
We're not punting, I can guarantee you. There would be no field goals in this game.
You know how that can go sometimes, but that's...
And all, all the communication that both MSU and Michigan Fitness Foundation has brought forward is that we are one of the most organized communities who are applying for this.
No, I appreciate that work.
And so, we have, uh, uh, phenomenal leadership. We have a huge, uh, uh, committee, uh, and Chris, and how many people are, uh, part of the full committee?
Uh, we're probably 10, 15 in there.
And so with the, yeah, even more people who are, want to be on, uh, the communications. And so this is, you know, when I stepped down, it was to ensure that this is community-driven, and, and, uh, that committee elected, nominated and elected both Chris as the chair, and he asked for a co-chair, which is Paul Hart-Sig. So both of them, and both of them bring such huge talent and skill and deep understanding of our community, um, and, uh, local connections, that, uh, we have a phenomenal committee of people who want to contribute.
I'm not questioning that at all.
No, no, no. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not my highest...
Because I see...
This is something that, uh, we should be very proud of.
Oh, the question.
Uh, and where Chris, Paul are going to take this committee and, uh, their success, we're going to be very, very proud of.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm not questioning that at all. All I questioned was what happens if the grant, because we're not putting, and that's why I wonder, are we putting the $440,000 up front? We're not. You explain that, so that, that's helped a lot, and understanding that the grant, but I also know how grants go, and you know, they're very difficult to write, as you know. They're very difficult to even, for someone to sit down and sometimes even read them, you know, to be able to explain what it is. So my question was, what happens if that doesn't happen? And you've already explained that. You guys have everything in line. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, thank you. Um, the, the, um, Facebook page is fantastic.
Oh, yes.
So who knows, to whoever...
Uh, we're, we're Facebook and, um, Instagram as well, because some people just aren't on Facebook, but that was Christine McAllister, she brought that up.
Very nice.
Uh, she's doing an excellent job, and, uh...
Can you, for the audience at home, do you know what that is? Does somebody know what that is? The name of it?
It's just, uh, Safe Routes to School.
Okay.
Uh, Facebook page.
Okay.
Um, you, you can look that up on Facebook and Instagram, and it's just information, so whoever's listening, just go there for updates. We're also, uh, same information gets pushed out on the township pages, uh, also gets pushed out on the school pages, and, uh, you know, for, again, all listening, just please, please pay attention to what's going on. Big date coming up, though. Big date coming up, um, December 15th, library at six o'clock. Um, hopefully we can have something similar to what we had the last time, um, you know, get some people, get some food in their stomach because it is a little bit later, and that's why we picked it, is because I felt like last time it was sort of rushed and people were still shuffling kids around and stuff. So I think, I think this will be, I think that'll be a good time, so, uh, if we can do that, that'd be super.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one question, though.
Yeah, ma'am.
Star safety for the kids, is there a lot of streetlights out? Do you guys think a lot of them at this point in time?
Well, I was on the daytime audit. Um, so I saw lights, when I drive through there, they're, they're sort of on and off, they're not very bright, um, and I was only up and down Webster Road between Clark and Drumheller.
Okay, so we need to just vacation on, that they need to contact us, and we can...
But I don't think it's just that they're out, it's just that it doesn't exist.
Okay, more that doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. And, and a lot of the audit and a lot of the tour that, or the, the walking that they did, uh, we didn't have them go down areas where we positively knew there was no sidewalks.
Right.
Um, sidewalks we'd really like to see, not just on one side, but on both sides. That's sort of the key to all this.
And just for whoever's at home listening, um, we have a consumers' page on our website that you can, um, report lights that are out. Obviously, if there's one not there, that's a different story. Um, or we can contact consumers through the township's staff, as well as usually our police officers report them when they see them as well, so.
Okay, cool.
We probably put in, like, eight of them in the last month. A lot of them are on Main Street.
Yeah. And like I said, our audit was, our first one was October 1st, and then the last one was last Friday, so there could have been some variation from there.
Maybe we could put something out on our Facebook page so everybody knows about it right now.
Yes, great.
Change.
Cool. Anything else?
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right.
You did perfect.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, item 13 is our unfinished business items for introduction and discussion, and apparently we have a transportation improvement program?
Um, yes, and this speaks to what Chris was just actually talking about. Um, so Mark Trotter has been instrumental. Um, I think we all know from working with him that he, um, works very hard and he likes to be organized, which lends itself really well to this project. So in working with Tri-County Regional Planning and looking at their transportation improvement program, um, Mark's goal was really to align all of these projects, um, into one year, whether that be 2023 or 2024. And that's where that advanced construct really comes in, um, critical here. Um, so at the last meeting of the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, they hosted their selection day, that was November 9th, um, and, and I can share the report with anybody that's interested, but I will say there's at least four pages of tiny eight-point print of projects throughout Clinton, Eden, and Engle counties. Um, and I am happy to report that Chandler Road, um, which has been a project that's been on my radar for some time, trying to make that a, a safer road for our residents that are not only biking, but, um, just driving and trying to turn sometimes. Um, it can be very difficult, especially in the Eagle Eye-Hawk Hollow area where people start to pick up speed and, um, have somebody on their tail when they try to turn. Um, and for people that bike, we had a fatality last year, unfortunately, um, that it, it's, um, it's, it's brought to light several safety issues. So, um, the Webster Road sidewalk, um, from I-69 to Drumheller Road is part of that, the non-motorized plan, or, or, excuse me, the non-motorized TAP, um, plan, and then, um, Webster, unfortunately, it seems like I wrote Webster Road sidewalk on both of those lines, and it should have just said Webster Road.
Okay.
I-69 to Clark Road, I'm sorry.
I wondered about that.
Uh, if that's the mill and fill, sorry. So the good news is, as a result of that selection day, our projects, all three of those projects were chosen, um, to be moved around to line up with, hopefully, um, the Safe Routes to School program. And that is phenomenal news because we were not sure that that was something that could be accomplished. So depending on what happens with Safe Routes to School, um, and that application being submitted, um, we have the opportunity to either construct those in 2023 under an advanced construct, or, um, you know, possibly if everything lined up and the stars were right, um, we would do them in 2024. But the, the goal is really to advance construct in 2023 and make all of those things come together into one project, which I think is just phenomenal. And I was almost told it couldn't be done, so I am thrilled to share this news with everybody. Um, so, um, Jason was correct. I don't know if Chris said it or Jason, but they, um, the Clinton County Road Commission is the Act 51, um, authority, and so they would be, um, putting up that money to advance construct if that was the situation. So, um, the next step in this is for, um, the Tri-County Board of Commissioners and, um, to, just for them to take a look at the selections and make their recommendations and approvals for that phase, um, and that's not going to be finalized until spring 2022. So it looks like between Safe Routes to School being unveiled in July and spring for these projects for us to know, um, we're going to know fairly shortly and hopefully the next six to seven months whether all of these things can be done in one year, which would just be huge for this community.
That's huge.
I, I know it would be a huge undertaking as far as there would be a lot of construction in the town, but I also think that it would be, um, the, the result would be amazing for the community, so, um, I'm really, I'm looking forward to these things lining up and, and being able to all be completed at one time, so.
Well, usually that kind of activity that takes place is an educational issue for people, so.
Yep, yep. And we've been, and we've been, um, Tim Swain at the Clinton County Road Commission tries to give us advance notice of when they're going and milling and filling at their turn areas, so that people know where to kind of avoid traffic, or if they need to get out earlier or wait until later to leave. Um, we try to work with our residents to help them avoid the frustrating times of day when they might encounter that construction, so, um, so we owe a big thanks, Mr. Trotter and I, you, to Andrea at Tri-County, um, because she's really the one that helped us make this possible. Um, so we shall wait, and I will provide updates as those become available, but we're hoping to, um, just have positive news moving forward, so.
But you are going from 69 to Clark?
To Clark Road. So the, the sidewalk, the TAP grant, the transportation assistant, assistant program, um, I'm sorry, transportation, I always forget, alternative center grant, um, that is for I-69 to Drumheller. The mill and fill of the road goes from I-69 to Clark Road. There's two projects.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But, so they're not fillings, they're not doing the mill and fill between 69 and Drumheller.
They are.
So it would be from 69 to Clark.
Correct.
So...
The sidewalk is only for Drumheller projects.
Right, I know there are two projects.
Yeah, I'm going.
And the dollar amount, the two projects, is what you're figuring, because when I first read it, it's hard.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the thing, too. Um, moving these to 2024 gives us the funding that we really need to do correctly as well.
The funding from the township or funding from grants?
No, no, funding from, um, the state of Michigan.
Okay.
To the Act 51, which is Land County Commission.
Question, I, I, I-69 to Drumheller, do you intend to connect the two sides, I mean, the end is, because it doesn't go all the way to that?
Yes. That's correct. So on the east side of the road, it stops and it crosses over to the township. The idea would be to maintain, or to, to continue that to Drumheller Road and have that connect.
Okay.
All on the same side.
Drumheller plus?
Yes.
Hi, another question, um, is that, I mean, do we have a process for identifying additional sources of funding that may support enhancements to these projects?
Yes, and that, that's where, um, Mark Trotter's been instrumental in that, and he even identified with, um, the, um, Chandler Road project that there are additional sources of funding that we may seek, um, to help us do additional things on that road to make it safer, um, which could be a bike lane or, or something else. So, um, I don't know about additional sources of funding for the Webster Road project. So, um, I don't know about additional sources of funding for the Webster Road project, but, um, I can talk to him about that.
If it would be helpful, I did a little bit of searching.
Oh, okay.
For different opportunities, but I know that's their sensitivity in terms of, you know, different people from the same entity or from the same county.
Sure.
And for the same grants and so that, I don't know if that's, I'm out of my bike lane with this or...
Yeah.
If that'd be helpful.
If you want to touch base with me, I would love, we could, um, create a list and, and, and talk to Mark and if there's any, um, competition, I guess, within the thing. Um, it sounds like they try to keep things like, you know, Do-It, Do-It Township just did their project in this last year. Um, I think they try to keep their major projects separated in different years. So, um, I would hope there wouldn't be too much competition for us in that realm. Anyone else? This is tremendous. I mean, I can't, I mean, I know this memo is short and sweet, but this is just fantastic news for us.
Alright, we'll move on then to unfinished business, B is a void, small, small B, and that's the Park Lake E. coli and geese migration.
Thank you.
Um, so as you all know, uh, beginning in June of this year, we were asked to be a part of a three-month statewide grant initiative through Mid-Michigan District Health Department for, uh, swimming beach water testing. Um, after they began this testing, uh, it was discovered that there were, uh, high levels of E. coli, uh, just over the action level. Um, as we got further into the summer, those levels began to rise even higher, um, causing us to close the beach, as you know, for most of the summer. Um, towards the end of August, those numbers dropped below the action levels, so we were able to open the beach back up for the remainder of the summer months. Um, there was additional testing done that was sent to Michigan State, uh, for microbial source tracking. Uh, this was done to try to determine what the source of the old E. coli contamination was. Um, they only have two markers for that test, which I have listed here, were for human and bovine or cow, um, to determine if it was coming from a nearby farm or if there was a sewage issue. Um, luckily, those results came back, um, in October and both of those were negative. So we do not have a sewage issue and we do not have a cow issue with nearby farms or anything like that. Um, so there isn't a marker for geese or waterfowl, um, but based on the, uh, information we received from the health department, they take that as those two being negative, that it most likely is due to waterfowl. Um, so right now, we are looking at mitigation strategies, um, to address the, uh, geese, uh, population that we have in the lake, which has become quite large. Um, so right now, what we are looking at doing, um, in conjunction with, uh, Park Lake Advisory Board, um, we are looking at first, um, enacting a township ordinance that would, um, prohibit, um, people feeding the geese, which is part of the issue of why they are hanging around the lake and not leaving. Um, there are some people in the township that have been feeding them and then they tend to congregate over by the beach area, nesting there, um, obviously defecating and then causing not to seep into the lake, which is causing the contamination. Um, so that is kind of where we have decided to start and we, uh, attached a draft here from, uh, Shelby Township. Um, and we will be looking at that and taking some of the language from that to bring you all the drafts. Um, we are also looking into hiring a private waterfowl mitigation company. Um, and they would utilize measures that would deter the geese from nesting. Um, and then if those measures did not work, then they would look into rounding them up and removing them from the lake and taking them somewhere else. Um, obviously, that's not the best case scenario because then we're taking the problem to another, uh, township or city to their lake. Um, so trying to just deter them from nesting, um, on the lake and at least at the beach area is the most ideal, uh, solution. Uh, so right now, in order to utilize those services, um, the Park Lake Advisory Board has requested an additional two thousand dollars to be added to their budget in order to contract with the company. Um, and attached, I have a memo from Dan Hayes, who's the chair of the Park Lake Advisory Board. Um, he outlines all of those actions that I just discussed, um, in order of priority. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, so great.
When they talk about the waterfowl, maybe you can't answer this, maybe Dan can answer it. Have they thought about sterilization, in other words, putting in food? So that there is no, how do I put it? The eggs are not, oh, the, the eggs are not properly fertilized.
Sure, sure. So one of, so one of the...
Is there another word for fertilize? I guess not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what, one of the things that they're looking at, um, one of the private companies that they're looking at, they oil the eggs, so it causes the geese to not want to, you know...
Be around them.
Be around them, so then they would not hatch.
That's a thought, you manually, man, you man, I'm sorry, you manually would have to oil?
Yeah, I think it's a spray. I'm not sure what exactly the process is.
So one of these professional companies names is Goosebuster.
Yes.
This board hires, I'm not taking pictures. Is there not a waterfowl hunting season and people?
So, there is, yeah. Um, and people can do that if they choose to.
There's no geese on the lake right now, Jason.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm wondering if we do a goose roundup, but it's a, a, a competition sponsored by the township to leverage our...
Goose pole? Oh, gosh.
I wasn't going to say it.
So much cheaper than two thousand dollars and people would love it.
No, who wouldn't? No, one of the worst things, and I only know that from personal experience. Where I live, there were geese that were there, they were actually swans, and they did just kill them and the kids went crazy.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the...
I mean, that's something you do have to consider.
Yeah, avoid any problems. That's one of our concerns is just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a high-traffic area. So obviously, we don't, we don't want to cause any emotional trauma to children.
It was going down.
Just the people who are posing a park poll right now.
Yes.
Somehow they look at it differently. That's...
All those kids who couldn't swim in Park Lake and they're focused on the geese.
Yep, that's how it works.
I do like that.
Oh, gosh.
That's alright.
Um, are there any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the information. And the jokes that go with that. Put your head down.
Well, so, I mean, one, one question I have is, I mean, we have all the language for ordinance, impact feeding ordinance, is that going to revisit us?
Yes, yes. We just want to, we, um, sorry, um, we want to make sure we work with, um, Park Lake Advisory Board's been a tremendous partner. And we want to make sure that, um, we work with them towards the language and make sure that it's right for this community, so.
Yeah, you're, you're going to want to work with them. They have a lot of concerns about the ordinance, it's always going to be enforced and finding people and then they're not going to be able to find. And, and it's a really, really good group of people that, including from A to Z.
They're great partners.
Their concerns are, you know, having an ordinance. The number one recommendation is to hire a professional company. The number two recommendation is don't feed them. So I, you know, that's, that's how that all, that all shakes off.
Yep, Dan's been there, um, Dan Hayes has been there every step of the way as he received results and, and has been helping us to facilitate solutions. So we appreciate him and that whole group and, and you as well, you're on that group, so, thank you.
Alright, is there any other questions? Alright, let's move on then to, well, thirteen B, capital B, items for action. So.
So, um, if, if I could take, um, I don't want to take A and B together, but they go together.
No, they have to be together.
Yep, and so I would like to know, at this time, I know we scheduled an additional work session for this Thursday from three to six.
On the eighteenth.
Yep, correct, Thursday the eighteenth. And then, um, an additional one next Monday from four to six.
Yeah.
So we have two additional and I'm wondering if, if at this time, you feel as though that is enough? Or would you like to, if we called, um, some additional ones, we could cancel them if they were not needed? I'd like the thoughts of this group.
Are these still going to be work sessions or special meetings?
They will be, um, so Thursday is, will be called as a special meeting and then Monday was noticed initially as a work session, but it will be changed to a special meeting so that there can be action during those meetings and not just discussion.
Yeah, good.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mister, Mister Rosecrans?
Thursday is from what time to what time?
I believe it's three to six.
Three to six.
So three hours and then two hours on Monday?
Twenty-second.
Yep. For a total of five.
Are you going to be making the recommended changes before this next one or Monday?
Um, so at this time, as I stated at the last budget work session, um, I can make changes, but really all I have at this time are changes that, um, Treasurer Wes Wasser and I have identified. Um, and then the concept of, um, committee chair payment, or committee chair and member payments increasing seem to have full support of this group. At least nobody said anything in, in, um...
And you also have the mistakes we've pointed out.
Yes, the mistakes that have been pointed out. So I can update, I can update and give you a, a, a new copy for Monday?
Yeah, I think that's helpful because we'll know, you know, if we're in the red and the black and which direction.
And also, I also owe you the general ledger, um, summary that you requested.
But you don't want to do that until...
No, but I, but I can do that, um, prior to your next, um, meeting.
Yeah, that'd be helpful because, I mean, the insurance flux alone is going to be, you know, somewhat significant.
Yep, so I can do that, um, so that you'll have the draft you have, um, for Thursday, but then I can make changes for Monday. Is that what I'm hearing? Yes, okay.
Well, are we going to have an updated draft for Thursday?
No.
No.
After Thursday, for Monday.
Not till Monday, okay.
Do you want one for Thursday?
Yeah, actually I do.
Okay.
Um, we need to get this document in, out of, out of the, in, into a forum at least where we can go to public hearing and we're not there. So we need to get the document updated as much as we can.
Sure.
So then when we sit down, we're working with something that's getting closer to being approved.
You will have an updated copy then?
You have the bandwidth to do that, okay?
Your work schedule would allow that, that would be helpful.
I can get it then.
I agree.
I've been looking at one more for the twenty-ninth of the thirtieth of November. That work sets after the holiday.
So Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. Let us check the township calendar first.
Okay.
Um, there are no meetings scheduled.
It's like the fifth week of the month, I think, that's why.
Beginning of the week.
I think it kind of does.
Mm-hmm, it does.
So that's, that would be my thought. That way we would have three more meetings in November.
Can we add an hour to the Monday, the twenty-second, either before or after? So just having two hours, can we go three hours or would that not be beneficial? I don't know, just an idea?
No, we can add an hour.
We could do that.
Either or, before or after, it doesn't matter.
So you want like either three to six or four to seven? Does that make any difference?
What's the preference?
I can't do three o'clock.
So four to seven?
I could definitely do that.
Okay, so twenty-ninth, Monday or Tuesday, you could have, can do another four to seven?
Something going on the twenty-ninth, whatever.
We good?
Yep.
Okay, we could do...
It's on Monday?
No, that's...
Yeah.
The twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So we could do four to seven and four to seven?
Will you say that again, I'm sorry?
On the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth?
Right.
We would reserve for four to seven on both evenings and then release one of them, well, probably the thirtieth if we didn't need it.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I can't make the twenty-ninth, that's okay, I, my grandson played basketball.
Oh, nice, no, yeah, okay.
I'm sort of jammed up on that day too.
The twenty-ninth?
Yeah, I mean, I could ask to move some things around if, if I needed to.
And it sounds like we might need at least that one.
So it sounds like thirty. If two are having issues with that.
Should we go ahead with the twenty-ninth or would you prefer we not?
I mean, if we're going to start making decisions, I would prefer we don't.
Okay.
I mean, hopefully, we're going to move toward, you know, we'll have some sort of decision-making protocol which will allow us to have our voices heard and then move forward.
Okay.
Alright, so it looks like the thirtieth?
Yep, thirtieth from four to seven.
Jason, does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd be four to seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that sounds like that's etched in cement. Alright, does everybody understand that? You good, okay? So we're going to go thirteen B. And out of that items for action, we're on B, which is the twenty-second budget public hearing.
Mm-hmm, so...
Still going to try shoot for that?
Um, well, so your first meeting in December is the sixth and that you have to have a budget public hearing prior to the fifteenth. So either you hold it concurrently with your...
We do that.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, we didn't have a motion for this one.
Oh, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That way I know they'll vote, so...
I mean, we haven't done a vote on any of these additional meetings.
Well, exactly, these, exactly, well, these are items for action.
Except that's where I put it.
The one you do on Monday though, because that's going to be a, a board meeting, right?
No, not till, this is...
If you're going to vote, you've got to have a board meeting. You can't vote on this.
No, 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 we're saying, um, we didn't vote to, um, the item for action was the additional twenty-twenty-two budget work sessions.
Right.
And Brenda's saying, we didn't vote, we didn't take action on that.
Right.
For the three, for the other three days. And that's, so we're all good, so we need to take a vote. So who's going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second, yeah. Mister Keun's Bliss?
Yes.
Mister Almarichi?
Yes.
Mister Bensy?
Yes.
Miss Howe?
Yes.
Miss Butler-Chandler, yes, Mister Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, now we're on.
Now we're on.
Now we'll take.
Okay, so in order to, um, call the public hearing, we have to put a legal notice in the paper. And that has to occur at least seven days prior. So if you wanted to hold the public hearing on the sixth, I almost need to have it in the paper tomorrow. If you would prefer to hold it anytime after the sixth but before the fifteenth, we would have to call a special meeting.
Alright, I'll say that one more time. You're going to need...
Because of Thanksgiving.
Right, it's a holiday, so those don't count.
So, and I have to have it to the paper by, like, during the day Wednesday. So I...
Which will be the twenty-fourth. Is that Wednesday?
No, today, like this, this...
Oh.
This week.
Seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm saying, I basically have to put it in the paper like tomorrow or Wednesday if we're going to hold a public hearing on the sixth.
Oh, is that what we're looking at, the sixth, okay.
Or you can choose to hold a special meeting between the sixth and the fifteenth.
I move that we, uh, post the, uh, budget approval meeting on December sixth and authorize the Ring of Pearl for newspaper.
Thank you.
Ring of Pearl, that's a good, that works.
Well, second, uh...
Mister Almarichi?
Yes.
Mister Bensy?
Yes.
Miss Howe?
Yes.
Miss Butler-Chandler, yes, Mister Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mister Keun's Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if we get feedback from the public at that point, are we going to change it in real time?
Yeah, we'll have to.
You don't have to adapt it that evening.
Correct.
Well, that was what his motion was.
Well, that we, that we hold the public hearing.
I mean, that wasn't what he said, but I'm willing to agree.
Oh, well, I think he, I thought you meant...
No.
Okay.
The motion was to host the approval of the budget that night.
That's correct. He really, really, I think.
I, I spoke what my... So I apologize.
I must defer.
I had no...
I don't want to split hairs. I just wanted to ask the question if there were changes, would we be making them that night?
I, I was under the assumption that, uh, we were going to work towards the approval and if we did not make it, we would then have some window of flexibility to host another meeting.
Yeah, first we'd have to hold the hearing and then we'd have to hold an approval.
So based on, based on the public hearing, it could be adapted the sixth or it could be adapted the tornia?
Correct. So, but, but there's two meetings involved here. A public hearing meeting and, and then the final approval. So you're good or...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other questions? Did we vote? Yes. So we're good. I have it written down, so... All right, the next one is what I changed. See? Okay. For the items for action, they have to do with the minutes, having to do with the yetis. Out of all the committees, and that's what I moved, there are no signatures on our, so we don't know who took the minutes for these committees, which is part of an issue that's been there for a long time. So what I'm asking is that when we get minutes, say from the planning commission, for example, that there'll be a signature as to who respectfully submitting these for us to accept them. So we know who's taking the minutes. Is that...
Well, I have a question for Brenda because she can answer it. Historically, has the board approved these minutes and then they go back for signature?
For the board trustees, yes.
After the board trustees. So what supervisor, how is it saying? She would like them signed before they, the draft signed when it comes to the board trustees.
That's correct. But that's the committees, and now, that's correct, for the, for the minutes for the board. What I'm looking at here was the consent agenda that I changed and moved it. And that consent agenda, okay.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get there.
No.
Okay. So historically, are committees signing these minutes after the board approves them or they deny?
The committees do not sign. I thought you were talking about the board.
I think, I think the only one that has is Ann's calls.
So, so they need to, they need to be signed.
Yeah.
Either, either after we approve them or before we approve them, but they need to get signature. Because we need to know who is taking them.
Correct.
I'd like to look at that summary.
No, oh, I, I want you, no.
I would recommend that if we do anything that is before, um, because as you can see, sometimes just even getting the minutes is difficult. So I wouldn't have to, probably have to go back and ask for another stuff.
Oh, no, it's understand that when, when in fact they submit them, that we know who it is that's taking the minutes.
Okay.
That's... That was my only issue. So you need to vote on that? Do I need to vote very much?
Brenda's going to look into it.
But we need, we need a vote to approve.
To approve.
B through J. No, just, you, you removed B through J?
Yes.
So you have to approve B through J?
Correct.
We need a motion to approve these minutes as submitted this time.
With the clarification that you will have signature.
Well, Brenda's going to look into it.
Yes, sure.
And let's see how it's done elsewhere.
Done elsewhere or what's required?
Well, how it's done, you know, I, I don't think you're making an unreasonable request.
No, I understand that, but I'm, I'm not like...
But we need to, we need to...
I'm just trying to approve the minutes that I have in front of me this time.
To get them out of the way.
Well, that's to get them out of the way.
Yeah, and so...
That's okay, you know, however you want to do, if you want to get them out of the way, that, that's okay.
Well, we've got some of them that are back in February.
Yes. With no signature.
And they were...
It, it may be conducive if, um, if what Brenda finds out is that we should be doing that, that maybe we start with the January twenty-two?
Well, I would start with December. Whenever they submit, this next group that comes in...
I know, but what she's saying is she's going to look into it. So if she comes back on December sixth and so...
It's okay.
Yes, let's do that. And we decide, yes, let's do that, then let, then I would say, sure, December.
But we might not have the time to get this information out to the committees.
We'll have to notify them that they need, that's what they need to start doing too.
Their secretaries, whoever they appoint.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, we're going to have to notify them too because some of their minutes were already done.
That's okay.
Okay.
They just go back and...
I move, I'm going to make a motion here. All right, so I move to accept the minutes. With the following caveat. Uh, first, uh, we'd like to see, uh, if, if, upon Brenda's research, if it appears that the minutes should be signed, then we should send these back and notify each of the committee members to sign, uh, these minutes. Uh, and upon their signature and return to the clerk, uh, that will finalize the approval of the minutes.
I don't find that unreasonable. We do that with our committee members as well anyway. They have to come in, they, they can't do it electronically. They have to actually have a physical signature so it can be checked, so...
What?
The only problem with that is, is not...
No, not yes, what did you say?
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is we already require that our committee members, for example, Terry, when she had to sign her name, she couldn't do it electronically.
For what?
Her application.
On her application.
Oh, okay.
So what Jason's saying is, if I'm understanding what he's saying, is that these minutes will be returned upon her, upon Brenda's investigation as to whether she finds, whether they need to be signed or not.
So are we going to go backwards the last year and redo them as well?
Well, it wouldn't hurt, but you're not, no, because I accepted them also. I've always accepted consent agenda.
So can't we just move forward from here, knowing that we're in the process of fixing the process?
I don't even know if we're going to adjust the process, we're going to look at the process.
That's exactly right.
So, you know, I, uh, I didn't second Jason's motion because I didn't want to back up. I want to go forward.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So I think that, uh, all minutes coming forward will be under the, the rules.
Yeah.
Rather than change the rules in the middle of the road and go backwards.
It's not changing the rules, we just haven't enforced that. There's nothing that, you know, that hasn't been changed.
I asked the clerk's office what she has been requiring. If she hasn't been required to be signed when I got here, so it's a change.
So should we do it from...
I prefer just to, to do it going forward.
Yeah.
Like start January first?
If, if that's what, I, I think you have to look into it. I think you have to come back to us December sixth and we have that discussion on December sixth.
Right.
My concern is, is a lot of these are just emailed to us. These people might not have scanners to be able to sign it and send it back to us. That's my concern.
No, I, I understand that. And that's always, I've had, you've had people come in second, third time so that, you know, their committees have been with their signatures to be checked. So, no, that's fine. You know, whatever you determine...
Okay.
To be done. All I'm saying is that it hasn't been followed and it needs to be followed so that we know, when we're looking at them and reading them, who just is taking these minutes. Right now, we don't know who takes the minutes. So January's fine, that, that works. So you want to change your motion? This is in which, I happen to agree with first motion, but if you want to change it, that'll start January.
Well, if I don't get a second, then I don't get a second, so I can make a motion, alternative motion.
I would second that myself.
Working on the assumption that, uh, if this is in fact, uh, uh, required under Robert's rules and, uh, consistent with our bylaws, uh, then we should move forward. Uh, since it was brought up during this meeting, I don't think it's heavy lift to shoot it back to the five committee members, our committee secretary to say, hey, can you go ahead and sign if you were stopped in?
But I mean, some of these folks, it's been almost a year since they've given us the minutes. So I, I agree with you that it shouldn't be a big deal, but it seems to be a big deal even for them to electronically send them to us.
Well, it's going to be a big deal one way or the other. If in fact we have to do this because of, like, scanner and the like, I... Y'all are welcome to not second my, uh, motion.
I'll second, because I happen to agree with what he says, but... So I'll second it?
Sure.
Do you want to repeat, you want to repeat it or you want to, go ahead, you can repeat it.
I, the motion was to approve the minutes pending, uh, a, uh, research by our clerk as to the requirements, um, I'd say both by Robert's rules of order and by bylaws. Um, and then, uh, if there is in fact a requirement for signing the minutes that we send the minutes within this packet that have, that are before us, B through J or whatever, um, to respective committee secretaries and request the signature so that we complete at least these meeting minutes.
I second that. Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Butler-Challenger, no? Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
No.
All right, that's just two four.
And I can tell you why I voted no is I think that we should go ahead and prove these minutes as they are and start from January first going forward after we move it.
Yeah, but this group, there was a lot of minutes here. And in fact, it was nine out of ten. I think I wrote, yeah, nine out of ten, didn't even have to sign signatures.
Yeah.
And Anna always submits, housing commission, she always submits it electronically. She sends an email, but she signs it before she...
She faxes it.
She faxes, okay.
Sorry, just, she faxes it.
The data this year. So it's... Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, letters B through J as they're written.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Okay, we've got fourteen, which is new business. This is items for introduction and discussion, which has to do with the twenty-twenty-two. Basically, still doing that one.
Yeah, so I prepared, um, the days and times for the board meetings as well as all committee meetings. One of the changes is, let me get to it, sorry. Um, the senior services advisory board, um, has changed their meeting day to the second Tuesday of the month at three P.M. Um, that is the only change as far as day and time for committees.
I'm sorry, Bill, because they changed it to what day?
Uh, the second Tuesday of the month at three P.M.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add, um, under the board meetings, um, August first, because that's going to be the general election.
The primary?
Yes, sorry. We changed to the second. Would the second give you enough time?
Well, it's possible. The second is the election.
The second is the election, but I mean the third, I'm sorry.
But it's possible that I would request to cancel that meeting.
Just cancel it?
Yeah, like we have to. But I would, I would wait until closer to that time and Brenda will leave that decision.
So we leave it then?
I think we were just writing it on the...
Yes.
We were just writing it down here, so it's possible.
We typically just note it and then we cancel it later on if we go to...
You've got June twenty-first asterisk, and that shows...
Yes, so, um, Juneteenth is now a federal holiday. So that is why, because we will have to observe that on the...
Okay.
Nope.
So for most of these dates, if it's on a holiday, you've moved it already and then asterisked it? But for farmer's market board, it's Thanksgiving, November twenty-four? So do we want to move it beforehand?
So I usually don't move that one because they decide if they want to cancel it or move it earlier in the week. That's typically what they have done with Thanksgiving.
Okay. And then my second piece to that, uh, the planning commission, November eighth is a election? So I can imagine we wouldn't have access to the, this room.
Uh, yes, so there is a possibility that that meeting would either be moved or it would be canceled. Uh, that would be up to the planning commission to decide prior to the election.
Normally, what we do is we send these to the committees. Have the committees look them over and then send them back to her uh, so that we can, uh, accept them for next meeting. That's what we've done for years.
Have they went to the committees?
Um, I haven't sent the document, but I did touch base with the committees to see if they wanted to change their date or not.
Oh, you already have checked with them?
With, with the ones that, um, usually change their date and time on occasion, like the senior center advisory board, I asked them during their meeting if they wanted to change their day and time date. So we changed it at that time. Uh, but I have not sent them the actual document, but I can do so.
I think you shouldn't have them, in their next meeting, look them over and then give you a revised copy if they want to change anything.
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah, I think we need to highlight, like, the meetings that can't happen. Like, we're not going to have one on Thanksgiving, we're not going to have one on election day. Like, they need to decide what they want to do, at the very least with those.
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Um, as of right now, the committee does still have this, we haven't, we haven't resolved it.
When did you plan to do that?
Um, I am working on reviewing, uh, the application for the recreation coordinator right now. Um, and then after we finalize, um, those for interviews and such, I think we'll move from there.
Part of that was calling, um, part of that was the, part of that motion, um, by trustee Almarichi was to have a group of both of those come together. And I have a feeling that it, there might be some changes, but I have a feeling that that would probably also be the group that would, um, would move, would like to sit, I'm guessing, and would probably ask to be...
So part of that motion was to have representatives from both committees be a part of the application process?
Yes, they will be, yes, they will.
So it sounds like you're reviewing applications for those?
I'm dwindling down to people that are qualified and like, see, like, good candidates and then I'm bringing a pool to them.
That is not the intent of the motion.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So I, and the intent of the motion is that you have representation of both committees as a whole part of that process.
Okay.
Okay.
Because there are some that are not qualified at all, so...
As there always are.
Yes.
Did we determine how many from each committee was going to represent?
You've got to answer Ryan's question. Because when do you plan on hiring somebody?
We, we don't know, we have the, we have the... Yeah, but we, but we still haven't, yeah, we, but that will, yeah.
So...
I thought you asked about the committee, so...
No, I, I think you asked what they were going to fill a position, didn't you?
Well, they were sort of intertwined in their answer, so virtually, yes.
I just wanted to make sure what I'm asking.
Thanks. But you're right, I think it sounds, we're not going to move on this in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have, uh, I, B is annoyed. All right, we have, uh, I, B as a void, I have a fraction for quarter twenty-twenty-one budget.
Before you tonight, you have, um, a small list of, um, items that are not going to change by the end of the year, which is the five thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, um, that I'm asking you to approve, what you have on the second page and into the third page are watch list items that because of the nature of police department fuel, fire department fuel, um, will continue to change and will need to be, um, watched and, um, and then corrected by the end of the year, um, one of those being fuel is running extremely high, and we also can't, um, account for the number of calls we're gonna receive to go out on, um, for fire or police, so fuel, fuel costs at this time, um, they've exceeded their fuel budget, um, and they will need an amendment, but I'm not gonna ask you to amend it now and then amend it again by the end of the year. I see your face.
That's true.
It's okay. It's okay. I don't, I don't want you to vote on the, the second or third pages, I would like you to, to consider the five thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Because there's no way I'm.
No, no, well, I'll continue to keep you apprised at both the December sixth and the December twentieth meeting as to those other items, but at this time, I'm not asking you to make any changes to those watch list items. Go ahead.
Your contractual professionals were dealing in rounds, and it's saying underneath it, that was payments for an emergency generator contract.
So that's all I usually account for in that budget line, and we had to have, um, an emergency tree removal, we had a property that's down on Outer Drive, and a tree was going to fall into, and onto a neighbor's, um, either the garage or the house, um, and so we paid, because it was on our property, we paid to have that removed so it wouldn't damage any resident property.
So the generator was the one that?
The, the generator, um, the generator we account for every year and budget for, um, I'm telling you, the reason that line went over is because I had the emergency tree removal.
Hmm, that's a lot of money.
What's the, the generator?
No, the sixteen hundred dollars, that's for the generator, not for the tree removal.
Uh, no, that was for the tree removal.
Right, the generator's a whole different.
It was twelve, I think it's twelve hundred dollars.
It's a lot less money than replacing someone's roof though, right?
For livability, for the suit, yeah, yeah.
You're doing a good job cleaning up on this.
I, I, I'm trying to keep you apprised, I know there's a lot of watch list items, but.
The prices change, you're, you're reflecting that, so that's good.
Okay, thank you.
And acquisition for the capital outline?
Um, so that was for tax bills, we, we approved those tax bills, um, back in February.
For, it says park lane road parcels.
There's two parcels, yeah, the house had two parcels.
So it is the house, okay.
It's the house and the garage are on different parcels.
Yep. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so what we're looking to do then is to vote upper down for page one.
The, the five thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, correct.
Okay.
I would move approval of the six expenditures on page one totaling five thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, uh, to change the budget for fiscal year twenty-one.
Second? Okay, go ahead.
Write your own name, then.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have superintendent's number fifteen, superintendent three four. Thank you, um, I know that this has been, uh, a busy couple of weeks with the election and all things, um, considered, um, so I will try to keep this brief. Um, November seventeenth, this Wednesday, will be Thanksgiving at the senior center, um, there are two servings, and I believe today was the deadline for reserving, but if there's a senior that needs to, um, let us know that they would like to come, we can certainly make accommodations for them, they can call the senior center at five one seven six four one five one six nine and leave a message, Brittany could, um, get back with them tomorrow. Um, there obviously is a budget meeting this Thursday from three to six P M. After that meeting, immediately following, will be a road committee meeting, um, they are going to take up the issue that I brought to you tonight of aligning the projects. They will also be discussing, um, trustee Elmarigi's request to, um, defer paving, um, in the downtown area, trying to, one of their projects was to pave the downtown, you wanted that all to align, um, so that'll be one of their discussion items as well, and to see if there's anything else that can put, be put in place, um, before, um, that. Um, I did receive assurance, uh, I'll say this while I'm talking about roads, from the county road commission, that if, um, any work needs to be deferred on Webster Road, they will take measures to, um, deal with potholes and cracked ceiling to try to keep that in an ideal maintenance situation until we can mill and fill that, so I just wanna mention that. And then the township offices are closed in observance of Thanksgiving, um, both Thursday and Friday, so Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. And is, not only is our staff, um, trying to get into their, um, end of the year wrap-up and, um, after election cleanup, but, um, they're also working on winter tax bills that will be available by December first, so.
Thank you.
Our, sorry, yeah, so our front office staff is, is, um, hard at work with year-end, um, and, and taxes now at this time as well. A lot of our residents choose to pay taxes by the end of the year, um, we appreciate that, and actually, um, it helps keep us moving through the December, so um, we'll keep the sidewalks salted and the parking lot clear and people can come see us. Any questions for me, please? I'm seeing one.
Nope, you'll see these, so. All right, public statement, number two?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So seventeen is now the board member comments, so that you're in.
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thank you, Anne, for coming, 'cause you're the only one sitting there, so that's all right, but thank you anyway, and thank anybody who's listening. I'm all set, yeah?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Uh, just a thanks to the voters for supporting the library millage earlier this month, uh, hopefully folks have been in to see the new library, it's just phenomenal in there, so go visit what your taxpayer money is paying for.
Okay. Do you have a motion to?
I move re-adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Elmarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Always one of you.